Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our evening conversation. My name is Juan Juan. I am a member of the Racial Equity Commission here in Malden. For record, Kashana Harley is convening this evening. Before we go ahead and get started, it's obvious that many of you aren't here because you believe wholeheartedly or want to make an impact with respect to diversity, equity, inclusion here in Malden. So I, in essence of time, I will go ahead and just turn it over to our mayor, Gavin Christensen. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Gavin Christensen, mayor of the city of Malden. And I not only want to welcome you here this evening, but also say thank you for being here on such an important issue. And I want to let you know it's important not just in words, but in actions. In preparing for tonight, I believe that you'll be pleased to know that we are making progress. Now, we have more work to do, but again, progress is being made. Off to my left, your right, we have a full-time diversity, equity, inclusion officer, Kashana Harley. We tried to get that loud enough, Juan.
This is before coming to Malden.
And what?
We're all civilized into the 26th.
Now, you see what happened when you put the mayor and the council in chat? This is not how the government runs each day. I want to assure you of that. But as I was mentioning, we have Kashana Harley with us. And she, along with our previous DEI officer, have made progress here in the city of Malden. In looking over for tonight's presentation, one thing that we have done that I think has made a tremendous impact for us is Kashana is on every single hiring panel across the government. And what that has meant for us is we were less, we had less than 5% of people of color working for the city. And as of June 30th, 2023, the state notified us, they now believe Malden City Hall, Malden Government has 20%. So in just a couple of years, we are making strides. Now, again, we have more work to do, but I want to assure everyone, it's not just the name on why we're here tonight. Another thing that impressed us in looking over where we are, we now have 70 people across the government that speak 20 different languages. Prior to your involvement in your advocacy, I think we had less than a handful. And it's just not here at City Hall, but also what we believe is just as important as what we do during the day is what goes on during the night. So a lot of our boards and commissions working with Kashana, we've spent a lot of time trying to make sure they reflect what our community has become. So prior to this effort, we had, again, less than a handful from diverse backgrounds representing us on these boards and commissions. As of today, we have roughly 40 people. So again, baby steps. We have more work to do, but progress is being made. And it's not just here at City Hall, and it's just not with the boards and commissions. It's also with ourselves. So both the city council, our office, as well as the school committee, has all undergone anti-bias training, not just once, annually. And all of our staff and directors here at City Hall have done the same. So again, there are many issues to choose from during the day. I can tell you that. You'll see them in my tell-all book. But this is one that we will not let go of. We are committed to this. We want to see Malden become all that it can and should be, and it starts and ends with you. So again, on behalf of our city, welcome and thank you.
Hello, everyone. So in the interest of time, I'm going to be kind of super quick because I really want to get into the meat of why we're here. But I just want to introduce myself as the new Diversity Equity Inclusion Coordinator for Malden. I want to let you know, just from the bottom of my heart, I'm truly honored to be able to have this position. I'm super excited about doing this and to be able to do something that's going to contribute to the city that I live in. It's super important to me to have a feeling, what I want for Malden, my vision is to have a feeling of belonging for everyone. And I think that covers so many things. So in terms of being able to know where the right place to get resources from, having them in languages in which you can understand them, to be able to feel like you're valued and included in the community. So to have these meetings like this where we can say, well, what do you guys want to tell us? What is important for you? What do you want to see happen in the city to have it improve? And the feeling of just being valued, so having events in the city where we celebrate our culture and our diversity, to just be able to gather, have some education and trainings where we can have, you know, a luncheon learned or some night events where we can kind of learn about each other, how to build and make the city a better place. So I will hurry up and end my spiel, but just some of the goals that we have, some specific goals is one, to have a DEI strategic plan for the city. So I would like to have, you know, a one to three-year plan to start with at least, because I feel like timelines and to have some type of a plan is super important. I live by them. And I feel that when you have these things, it gives you a level of accountability. And to be able to check back and say, okay, this is where I should be and why am I not there? And what do I need to do to kind of improve? So I feel that if we could have this strategic plan and just kind of build, what do we need to fix in the city or to improve in the city? And also, I want to, for the workplace, I would like to start looking at our hiring practices more. So Bibio's the previous Diversity Inclusion Officer. She did a wonderful job on hiring and really getting diversity into the, into City Hall. So I'd like to see that continue and to also make the workplace culture better for everyone. I'm into mental health, education, and I feel like all that is really good to kind of bring us together to be a city of belonging. So I'm excited to begin this work, and I think this today is the start of something wonderful. So I'm happy to do this with you all, and thank you for having me. So next, who's going to be leading the discussion, an amazing, amazing person, Dr. Maritza Barros. So she's an inaugural full-time lecturer in the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Justice Leadership Program. She also is a member, works at Tufts University, and she's also the DEI JAD, and that's Diversity Equity Inclusion, Justice Acceptability and Belonging Consultant. So it's my honor to welcome her to.
Good evening, good evening. I'm really not a fan of the podiums, but I think for the Zoom folks, I have to stay in the mic. All right, all right. That's all right. So I am going to help ground us, and I'm just gonna move to the side here. How's everybody doing? Thank y'all for your patience as we get started doing really important work. And my, my job is to help ground this conversation so we can try to normalize, trying to identify challenges. I like to think of myself as a solution-oriented person. I am coming through with a particular framework and how I do this work. And also, I'm not here alone. I'm here with my team from HCA, so I just want to give them a shout out. I'll be joined by Nicole very soon. But you'll see here a framework for equity and inclusion. It's important to have a framework and an understanding of how we come into these conversations. And there's three levels in which we can enter this conversation. I think the level we just heard from comes from the systems level, where we think about organizationally, our practices, our policy structures and things of that sort. Today, we're really going to ground the conversation at the level of self. And so you can see the SQ here. Here we go. SQ stands for self, spheres of influence, and this is actually better here if I can. Can I mark it on the audio? All right. So systems, spheres of influence, and the self. So today, we're getting grounded to the self, really trying to understand what is my role? How can I contribute? What's my ownership and my responsibility in this work, right? Because this work is too heavy of a burden to be on the shoulder of one person or one commission, right? So today, we'll be grounded at the self level. And we'll also, I think, if we can develop ourselves naturally, tap into our spheres of influence, right? Whether that's personal or professionally. And there's one belief I want you all to hold with my framework here, and I believe it myself, right? Having this belief that every person in an organization has the ability, the capability to change. We have to believe that, otherwise, it gets too difficult to carry this burden, right? So with that belief, we want to consider a few things. I'm going to help frame us and ground us in the conversation because I don't want us to break in our regular everyday minds, okay? There's a lot going on in the world. There's a lot going on for people personally. And when you come into this space, what is the one thing we all hold as humans? Anybody want to take a tribe? What is one thing every human has? Bias. Bias, exactly, right? And when it comes to bias, it's not a matter of if, but when. And so we want to really come in with a conscious thinking. And one thing we want to consider in having these conversations, we don't all know everything that there is to know. Okay, there is no such thing as an expert. I stand up here with an expertise in this work, but I do not claim to be an expert. Nobody is an expert. So we can just let down our guards, right? We don't have to be so proper or be mindful of how we're showing up and what we're saying and how we're saying it. But there really has to be a way to create a space for some form of, I'll say, safety, but you'll see soon enough why I don't like to lean too much on safety because I cannot guarantee safety in these conversations. But definitely bring really courage. The other thing is to recognize that this is lifelong work, folks. This is not something you're just coming to work, take on the professional development training and then leave it at the office. This is actually something we have to own personally. Just as difficult as conversations can be in the office, imagine at some dinner tables, right, how that can be. So we do have to develop our skill and make a commitment to do this work daily. And that looks like different things for different people. Know that I continue to do this as a facilitator myself, right? And I lead with cultural humility because I know attitude can potentially cause harm unintentionally. And so we continue to have to do this work and know that there's no ending. We heard some great strides from the mayor that has been made, but as he made that progress, we're going to continue moving forward. It's important to celebrate the win because this is hard work, right? Some of undoing of many years disparities and harm that's been going on. So you want to celebrate those wins, but know that there's no arrival point. There's a north star in you will, in our pursuit to inclusive excellence, but we'll never get to a place where we're anything done. Sometimes it feels a little daunting, but it's good to live in that reality that this is something that you do every day, just like you work out or try to eat well, you know, take care of your mental health. This also becomes a part of that self-development. In this work, and I wanted to share these thoughts with folks because I knew that the community members that would show up, commissioners, y'all are deep into this work, you're committed, and there are things you have to consider in this work. When we talk about diversity, diversity in its definition, we're going to talk definitions in a few, but it's very broad, right? There's a breadth and a depth to that term. And so we have to know that we cannot distance ourselves from the issues. Something that may not impact you directly or is not familiar to your own identity is not a permission to distance yourself from an issue, right? So keep that in mind. In doing this work, we have to work to disrupt this process in our own sphere and move into this liberation mindset. So all of us have been socialized, right, in this American culture, society. We're born into families and into this world not by choice, right? But when you move into a liberated mindset, you're making conscious choices about decisions you make, values you hold, beliefs that you keep, because they all shape your attitude, right? Your attitude influences how you engage within a cross difference. So you have to work to consciously disrupt things that may just be automatic, or that's just how it's always been. That's just how my culture does things. We have to work to move into a conscious way of thinking. We do also want to center learning via a developmental process. What this means is that not only do we need people where they are, but we allow people to develop at their own pace, right? And try to end up with compassion, because what may offer an aha moment or awaken you in a moment might just be the seed that is planted for somebody else and later on to be enlightened or awakened in whatever way that is. So keep that in mind, so that compassion, when it's necessary, we're centering learning in this developmental process. And then we always want to raise our, maintaining that raised consciousness so that we can be seeking to develop the language, seeking to adopt tools and skills that are going to help us sharpen our ability to engage within a cross difference, right? Just a few years ago in the pandemic, we were getting racial reckoning. You know, there was a term that came out that even I wasn't familiar with none of this work. And I heard BIPOC, and I'm thinking to myself, what is BIPOC? I should know this. But that's okay. That's cultural humility, and that's your continuous willingness to learn and be open to change at this terms. All right. So another piece about framing and having these conversations, especially in this space of future conversations that we'll have and without being getting into the weeds today, but trying to get y'all to help Kashana get more information to feed into her strategic plan. But as things get more vulnerable in the conversations, it's really important to recognize that we all come into this conversation with our lens. And our lens are used to interpret what's familiar and unfamiliar. Just by looking at me or looking at someone in the room, you don't know what they're carrying in the many selves that they're bringing into the space. So you have to be mindful that, again, in this cycle of socialization we've all been a part of, we bring with us our lived experiences, our family history. We bring with us our ideal values and beliefs, our societal influences and media, right? That we've been exposed to in our upbringing, our socio-historical context, and even our understanding of history, right? We know that some history is known, others have been hidden, others have been changed a little. All of your contextual understanding in that area also involves how you interpret what's familiar and unfamiliar to you. And then there's also so much more, right? So keep that in mind as we're sharing thoughts and opinions and experiences so that when we have conversations, we can try to create a faith of folks to be as confident in it as possible, right? And so in doing so, again, in making sure that we're conscious about how we show up, I like to always bring shared agreements into the room. You might obviously be familiar with shared agreements. You might have heard of this, or it's ground rules or community norms. I purposely stay away from those terms because who's determining that it's the norm or that it's a ground rule, right? So a shared agreement is a set of agreements that we share in saying, I'm committed to showing up in this way for others to be able to be their authentic self, and hopefully you too can be as authentic as possible. Notice I did not say your whole self, right? Your whole self, especially in a place of work, being realistic and authentic is maybe not what you want, but your authenticity and creating a faith of courage for folks to be able to be brave is important. So I have some shared agreements, and shared agreements can always be developed organically, even in meetings. Yeah, folks can go around the room and talk about what is it that you need to be your authentic self. We also don't have the time for that today. So I'm going to share some shared agreements with folks, and I'm going to ask for your feedback. Are we in agreement with these shared agreements? Is there anything missing that we want to call out and name in this phase today? Okay, so the first one, take faith, make faith. This one is all about self-reflection, being honest with yourself. We are all introverts and extroverts, depending on the environment we're in, right? If you feel and notice that you're taking a lot of faith, make faith for others. If you notice you haven't really spoken up, know that your thoughts and ideas are valued and necessary and we want you to take those faiths and seek out. What is said here stays here, but what's learned here means here, right? So this is an opportunity for us to develop trust and have some sense of confidentiality. But of course, the things that you learn here, we want you to take on and influence your own spheres. A brave saying, so this goes to that safety component, right? I cannot guarantee safety in these conversations if you think about the lens that we just went and talked about. It would not be authentic for me to say that. So instead, I wanted to be able to create a brave saying so we can be courageous because we are creating the faith around you shared immediately. One mic, one speaker helps us keep a respectful conversation. Offer what you can and add for what you need, really centering that level of humility that we want to be in these conversations. Expect and accept lack of closure. Not everything is going to be able to be closed with a pretty bow at the end of the conversation, and that's okay. It doesn't mean that we shy away from differences of opinions or potential conflict, right? Sometimes you have to go through some darkness to get to the light. But know that the conversation is open and safe, and as long as we need to show up in these shared agreements, we should be able to work through. And how do you create bravery, right? You can't come into a space and feel that we're going to be judged. So we've got to assume that the people who are here are here because they're willing and they want to further, you want to help them to do better themselves and so on. So we want to assume good intentions. So if somebody said something that sounds wrong or made you felt a particular way to you with that assumption of good intentions, it allows us to gain deeper to those conversations. We want to be specific, be thorough, and embrace a growth mindset, right? So that if I'm the one who makes a mistake or causes a harm, that I have this growth mindset and that ability to receive that feedback so that I can do better. Keep calm and respect others. We want to seek to understand before being understood. That's another good one, right? It's really easy to hear people and just ready to respond for making sure that your point is understood. But if we all seek to understand before being understood, we're able to get some deeper understanding. And then call in before the call-out. One of my students actually named it this way, and I really liked it because there is maybe a point that a call-out is necessary, but before we jump to a call-out, let's call each other in so that we can create more faith. So don't do nothing outside of the box, folks. Think like there is no box. That's about limitless thinking, right? Limitless possibilities. You've got to really take advantage of having that respect and the opportunity to fill each other's gaps so that we can get to new solutions and more creative potential in the challenges we face. Okay, so I went too far. Let me back up. If you can back it up from one line and just hear from the audience and anyone online, feel free to chime in on the chat. How do we feel about these shared agreements out here? Any? Awesome, awesome. Anything that's not listed here that shouldn't? Getting anything online? I'm not going to forget about my folks online. Thank y'all for joining us online. All right, so here's where we're going to already get y'all thinking and talking, okay? So we're talking about diversity, equity, inclusion. I threw in the JAD, the J A D, because it does go beyond that. But the buzzword that we hear, even in some places being weaponized, diversity, equity, inclusion. You've heard the term of the year, you'd say already, but what do you really mean when you say these terms? What do you mean talking about, right? We want to ground our understanding and definitions, and we want to have common language, because that's super important, right? Sometimes we're all going towards this north star, but it includes a veteran. But if we ground that, what are the steps that we're trying to take together here? So what we're going to do is ask folks in terms of two or three, if you think we create groups of three and four, just turn around and chat with each other. I want you to think about the term diversity and learn itself. Don't Google it. Don't try to sound politically correct. Just what's the initial definition of what do you think of? Or what do you think others, when you use that word, as? And then I'll just ask folks a few folks to share, what does diversity mean? We'll start with diversity first, then we'll get to equity and then inclusion, right? I'm going to give y'all a few minutes to define diversity. In the chat, how do you define diversity? Couple of remarks that are coming online. We've got different backgrounds, cultures, abilities, genders, and religions. When people of many ways of being coexist, how about in the room here? Anybody want to shout out a definition that is shared in the group? Yes?
I don't have a definition, but an example, rainforest.
Rainforest. This represents diversity.
A ecosystem of many species.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. How about one more? Alright. Just give me one second. Okay, so for diversity, what we tend to see typically, right? You see the submission statements and official documents. The definition that I'd like to share is a compensational diversity referred not only to the numbers, but also to recognizing the rich shit of perspectives, experiences and backgrounds within a community. Right, so a pet peeve of mine is when we talk about recruitment. We often hear the term diversity and recruitment. But what are we really looking for when you're saying diversity and recruitment, right? So really important to get some common definitions. While the numbers are obviously critical, we also need to think beyond the numbers. And then where's the level of cultural competence, your cultural humility in anyone who's hired to serve, especially in a municipality? Alright, so let's talk equity. Oh, giving away my. Alright, talk about equity for a couple of minutes. My picture might give it away already, but let's just go into the definition, right? Because I've left the cat out the bag already. Often you hear equity used interchangeably with equality. And we know that those are two different things, right? Alright, so equity and equality is two different things. Equity is about giving people what they need, striving for justice and fairness by acknowledging and rectifying past and present inequities. And some of these bold swift actions that may take place may seem unfair at the surface, but when you're thinking about rectifying past and present inequities, you understand, you know, the power of the image that's in front of you. Very, very important. You got to be equitable to get to equality. So let's talk inclusion, folks. Let's just take a couple of minutes and if we can get folks online into small groups with a timer. Are we able to do that? The folks in the room can certainly turn to your groups and start chatting. What is inclusion? When we say that, what are we saying? Your comments coming in individually and if you could drop in the chat. What does, how do we define inclusion?
We have something from Taylor, one of the businesses. Yeah, so if we're going to be doing this next time, they can. We can set up breakout rooms on chat. You had to do it like when you're setting up.
Fine, we've got some comments. Inclusion, by example, is not only being invited to the dance, but being asked to dance. Anybody else talk about that? I say true inclusion is letting me help you plan that party. Alright, what else did we talk about as far as inclusion in this space?
Being included is decision-making process.
Right, so not just having a seat at a table, but having your input valued.
Giving a tea.
Yes, giving a tea, awesome. Anyone else want to share? Yes?
Just the idea that inclusion, it has to come from intentionality. It needs to be deliberate intention of seeking out.
Yes, yes. And even on a personal level, be inviting or opening up a center of wellness to be approached. New definitions, a sense of belonging and the opportunity for people in full participation. For everyone watching in the environment, every individual's uniqueness is valued. And I think belonging takes a step further, right? So when we talk about this word, I bring in D E I, D E I, D E I is what you hear all over the place, right? But I bring in that jazz, that hook, that jab. But the first is justice, right? We talk about action, not just talking the talk, but walking the walk. So when you think about justice from an actual perspective, there are a few definitions that I want to highlight. It involves not just theoretical principles, but proactive and tangible steps towards fairness. Justice advocates for policy changes and initiatives that promote equality and equity. And necessitates ongoing education and awareness to address implicit bias. It's like, yeah, for the people in the back. Right, it inspires collective, collective is that key word, efforts to amplify marginalized voices and perspective, right? People are not minority. We often use that word to describe people who have been minoritized, right? Okay, so when we move to the next word, it's acceptability. This is another one that we know is there. It's like in the corner somewhere needs to be centered. When it comes to acceptability, there are again, a number of ways to describe it. I'm going to highlight a few. It involves ensuring that all individuals, regardless of their background, abilities or characteristics, that equal access opportunities to be towards and experiences. It encourages the design and implementation of inclusive practices and accommodations to accommodate diverse needs. Necessitates ongoing evaluation and adjustment of structures to address evolving acceptability needs. And inspires a commitment to universal design principles, making space, information and activities acceptable to everyone, right? So it goes beyond the physical, what we can see. When we talk about acceptability and that ongoing commitment to a set of any value and improving acceptability for all. And that brings us to belonging, right? I can, folks can say I'm included in City Hall, I'm welcomed in City Hall. But when I walk in, do I feel that I belong? That's another level of inclusion, right? So belonging goes beyond inclusion, representing a, excuse me, a deepened sense of connection and acceptance within a community. And there's a psychological safety that comes with belonging as well that I think we have to be intentional about. Alright, so we've gone through a number of definitions, right? So we want to get your, your good ideas. We want to get your assessment and feedback. So I want to help us clear our minds a little bit because you talked a lot already and you come in with your entire day that you've gone through today, right? It's a tough day, right? So we're going to take a mindful moment. This is also a great practice just for daily mindfulness. All you're going to do is focus on your breathing. I'm going to ask you to take four deep breaths. You're going to take four breaths in, four breaths out. And you're going to do four rounds of deep breathing and then we'll come back into the space. Alright, so I'm going to call folks back in for sound of my voice. Okay, so I'm going to invite my partner, Nicole, up to help walk us through the SWOT analysis. I'm going to be taking notes. Going to have y'all continue talking in groups.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So my name's Nicole Paliati. I'm a project manager. I work closely with Dr. Barrows and my background and really my passions include access to healthcare, healthcare equity, housing, recovery services and social services. And how do we get there? My background also includes operational excellence, process improvement. I have facilitated many SWOT analysis sessions with individuals and this is where the magic happens, is on the ground in these rooms, in these meetings. And I'm extremely impressed with the number of people that came out on a Wednesday night, took a time out of their busy lives. You know, you're not with your kids tonight, you're here, which clearly shows that, you know, we want to make the city of Malden a better place for all. So thank you, especially and the people online, I mean 25 people online, that's amazing. Is everyone familiar with a SWOT analysis? Great, let's switch to that slide. So we're going to have you break off into maybe like four groups, the corner of each room, and just take 10 or 15 minutes. And we'd like you to list out some of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that you see for the city of Malden. And really what this is going to do is provide us with a framework to build out the strategic plan. And it's really important that we have the input from community members in order to do this to ensure that we're living in the right direction. So some examples of strength. What is the city of Malden, aren't they doing well in this space? What makes you unique? I can tell you right now, like driving up here from my living southern Rhode Island, it was a two hour drive today and this is a beautiful city. Like I would, I would really be proud to live here. It feels safe, it's clean. So I think you guys are ahead of the curve in many ways. And, you know, what other strengths do you have? Weaknesses, where can we improve? Where do we want to put our focus on moving forward in the next one, two, three years? And then what are the external, you know, what are the external, maybe environmental factors that we don't have a lot of control over? But as far as opportunity, like what is currently happening? What is taking place maybe outside of Malden, you know, at a state or federal level? Like what programs are out there, maybe funding opportunities? Maybe other programs that you can take advantage of? What are the opportunities? There's a lot invested in this space right now and, you know, how can you grab hold of some of those things? And then the most difficult one is looking at the threats and the challenges. What are the main challenges that you feel you are facing right now? So if you want to take a few minutes to do that?
Well, first, I'm just going to start focusing on strength.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, it's difficult to strength through the lens of D E I. Okay, we'll take a few minutes. We have some guiding questions here that can help you in communication. We also have note pads if you want to take notes. But I promise you, we're going to ask you to report out and I'll pass through the notes. Okay, but I'm going to bring.
We'll give it maybe two or three minutes and focus on phrase.
Yeah. And folks online can drop their ideas on. Two minutes. Two minutes.
If someone, if you all want to designate one speaker for your group to go through what you have with the strength, that would be great.
A strong, combined, a strong diverse community.
Hey, y'all, if you want to share?
Yep. Specific kind of issues. Basically, we are pretty excited about language and access that the city is, again, very granular down to the, that the city has done a good job with that, and creating more and more access. There's only room to grow, but when you look at other cities in our area, in the region, they don't have as much access. There are a lot of community, and diversity of community organizations and affinity groups that represent the city, and the city supports those things when they can. And that there's a lot of momentum and change coming, and not just in government, but within our city and the members of the city. And another big diversity is just the new people, the influx of people that are choosing to move all in their homes. And, yeah, and just the general culture of openness that the city has.
Thank you. Glad we can make our way around, try not to, if something's been said, let's not repeat it, anything new. You want to go next?
No. I think it's a great job, but it's hard to see you from back here to color it.
Oh, yeah, I'm here, yeah.
I apologize. It's the challenge.
No, just thank you.
And I'm hearing music, all of it.
Is that the sound of you, right? Alright.
Thank you.
Do you want to share? I'll take that. You want to share a minute?
Yeah, I'll say, you can decide. Yeah, that's wonderful. My name is Judy. For the strength that we came up with. City is unique compared to other cities. Malton has a diversity among students and the language, which came from educators from Malton. And then another point. Taxi, the city dropped over time. When she was growing up, in her teen years, she didn't see much that her to be growing up and had seen it evolve over time. So now where she's seen people who look like her, whether they're restaurants, neighborhood, and just all different types of identities here in the city, the time has become very inclusive. Another point. Also, when driving past the high school, she was able to see a rainbow. And that was something that she can keep growing up and be sure to do, Billy. And then lastly, willingness to try new things and to try under diversity. Being a multicultural resident here in Malton and just seeing how much the willingness to try and being embraced in the space.
What an amazing.
Okay.
I'm just gonna read a couple of strengths that pipe into the chat. Diversity of our residents, we are almost diversity, and often not to choose it, and that's a beautiful thing. Thank you, T-More.
She also said diversity of business owners and. It was her own point, so she got to say it.
Who's next?
Y'all want to go next, right here?
I can go next. We coincided on some of the strengths, and one other one that was mentioned is that there is diversity in leadership. So city government, as well as, for example, the library, and messages that the library is constantly sending out into their community. I worked for a bunch of different volunteer nonprofit groups. And it's pretty much a coincidence between leadership in general with that diversity message. And I think that's very positive.
Y'all, come here?
Yeah, like others, we kind of shared similar, but I would say the the sharing of cultural experiences, the climate action process, the accessibility of our mayor, you know, he has the Instagram, and I think. No, it's a cool thing, because I think it speaks to, you know, a leader in our community being vulnerable and being connected. And I think, you know, when we think about leadership, it's always one way. And as opposed to, okay, let's try different methods of connecting with people in the community. And I think that's close.
Call that assertive leadership.
Correct.
Yes.
We've got milk in the bath.
So all of those things. And just like one or two things of that, you know. Malton has this very unique, that we are, we're accessible, we're, we have the bike trail that goes through, that goes right through the city. We have the team right there that goes and enables us to go get into the city fairly efficiently. And, you know, as my wife and son have said, you know, if you want to go and hit the ocean, it's 20 minutes. If you want to go and go and get to another region, if you want to go and get up to the mountains, it's 45 minutes to an hour. If you want to go and go out west, we're not that far to go and jump on the pipe, it's itch. And it's easy to get back in. So it's one of these things that we have that level of accessibility. And the other thing is that I know that people are looking at the housing cost, the moving cost, and yes, it's confusing in the area, but Malton is still trying to go really hard to be affordable. There's a reason why we have people that keep coming in constantly, because they see it's a place where they can go and do what they can, and we have to be able to build something. So a lot of people that want to stay here, on top of everything.
Great, thank you. There's also a lot of support services here, that we have, we have everything nice, but we've got everything from a recovery center to a wider arts scene, we're all about doing regional people working that has access to the river, you know, the arts, the bike paths, all of that. So I think that really helps bring people in and offers a lot of things, support services. We have a lot of things in the city.
That makes me think of public safety, anything you can do for the safety of the city.
People feel safe, families move here, they're going to be feel safe.
You want to learn something else?
It just slipped my mind, I'll come back to it in a second.
I think we have a police chief who's committed in change, and his values align with a lot of our priorities.
Look at that, I mean, we work for Malton, and we felt welcome. And I think the other thing is, Malton's traditionally been a community of immigrants. I mean, immigrants today are different than 100 years ago. The people, the people who are here, the established people have some perspective. They at one time were immigrants. So there's a welcome, it's not 100%, but I think the reason why we're a diverse community as we are, because people have felt welcome and have felt supported from coming from places. So there's almost that tradition that, it's a tradition of being welcoming and welcome difference. I think it's, those differences change every generation, but I mean, I don't think maybe the people who are without that, that tradition. You haven't been exclusive, you've been inclusive in developing.
I was gonna add too, with respect to many support services, one of the things I think about too is, not only did I find community when I first, you know, moved to Malton 10 years ago, but social media has been playing a big part in terms of watching many residents in Malton connect. One of the things I was thinking about with the Malton neighbors, helping neighbors. And, you know, basically, it was a group of people that, I don't know who started the group, but it made it possible for people to try out, to support others that are in need. And I think it speaks to my. But it would be several other people, but I'm just kidding. But it's a beautiful thing, because it really shows the heart of people involved in, and the great work that's being done. Like, if someone's in need of supplies, or something for their kids, or whatever, there's always people in the comments, "How can I help?" I'll DM you a message, people help.
But it's straight out of the communication process.
Right, right.
That just, that would make that to me too, it didn't emanate from the government. Usually it's government setting stuff up. This emanated from the community, yeah.
And obviously, again, I'll speak, the people that organized with me, I had never met before. Literally, yeah. We all had kind of the same idea at the same time, and we're connected. That's how creative we show.
I think there's a large density of good intentions in this, in this city.
So it is so important to highlight and hear where are our strengths, so that we know where we can play on those strengths, right? It's also important to think about our, I like to say, challenge points, right? So it's like putting that mirror up to ourselves and being honest. Let's talk about where our challenges lie, okay? In the city of Malton, we're thinking about it from a VDI lens, what are our weaknesses or challenges? You guys have guiding questions, you guys will need.
All right, we're gonna start, uh, from a second time. We're gonna start with Maureen. We have a response from a parent. We need still some homework that's already been done to be in trouble from the community that we have listening and through weeks we've worked together. Many have done great work immediately to do a Malvin tour in the city. And so glad that it's happening, but we have to acknowledge the work of the past.
Who wants to go next?
Yeah, we got a lot and, and, you know.
So, um, my group, we talked about a few things, um, lack of diverse teachers in the schools that students feel like they saw themselves represented in schools. And similarly, uh, the lack of representation or a little representation of city government in terms of diversity in leadership. Relying on grant funding, that was one. Having the ability to have deeper conversations as it relates to structural racism. Like how do we empower people with the own practitioners of change? You know, how do we activate people in the community to really think, um, think about this work, but really challenge structures that um, create these values for, values within communities? And housing challenges, affordability. Malvin's a beautiful city and yet you know, many people are faced with the challenge of trying to remain in their homes because of costs, you know, costs are high. And how do we address that in Malvin? And then never, I had to go over, uh, never having the resources to do everything that the city wants to do. All of them actually be there. That's just a lot of, uh, having the resources for that. And that is actually.
Thank you. This is a hot one because we've had a few more coming online. Um, we need a lack of affordable housing, employment opportunities for our youth, lack of educators of color and M B S. Uh, another weakness, uh, infrastructure of our city. We need to be way more open and intentional on what will actually work rather than making decisions we feel like we should do or that are trying to be popular, et cetera. Another one, uh, our teachers, local government workers do not provide diversity in our city. Thank you, Maureen.
Who wants to go next?
Um, just a couple of things that, uh, I'm on the school committee and we do a really good job of providing translation for people coming in over Zoom. But not the people that might want to lock in and be here or present. And also, uh, don't do that at all at city council. If someone can't understand what's, what's being talked about, they're gonna feel automatically disconnected. Just a couple, you know, maybe larger things, which is, you know, uh, well, and because we have this history of, of, of being diverse, sometimes it kind of gets formed over that, that we don't, kind of got touched on when you said, we don't talk about some of these things because it's always, hey, I have different neighbors and they're all a different thing. We just get along, but then it's never the, the, but then, you know, we don't talk about, hey, what you said, but it's, uh, painful, hurtful. Well, sometimes there'll be, sometimes a lack of, um, an unintentional lack of that to be just because they say, hey, that's the way it's always been. It's like, no, we need to change. We can see things in people. And I think that's one of those things that we kind of take for granted here, that we have the diversity, but slowly doing that deeper level for.
Yeah, we, we hit upon similar things. We, we talked about, we picked surface issues, but we don't address systemic issues. There's a lack of diversity in the way we organize, just in, in the way we run meetings and things like that, you know, like many cultures don't understand wrong tools or, you know, how, you know, even the hierarchy of, uh, council or anything is organized. We are, uh, still pretty racially segregated. Um, there are, you know, there's the affluent side of town and and economically segregated as well. Um, there, people in power are comfortable, uh, was one. And, um, mine just brought up another good one. There's a lack of public media space or the diverse community groups that exist in the city. And that's something we would, we'd like to see them changed. Um, but mostly you know, we hit, we hit above the same issues.
Uh, the higher angle for the government in Malvin, there is no diversity. Um, leadership needs to be more inclusive in the city. Um, Malvin is pretty late for games when they think about four thousand. And not enough to clear some of that.
And then I think we had a lot of things as well. Um, the one that was mentioned was for more we could do more translations, like so interpreting at meetings, but also in written, written formats, willing to adapt this in general. Um, there's a lot of us reading out how to reach different populations. So do you how to effectively do outreach, um, to, you know, invite people in from some different populations to be a part of decision-making things, um. And then would be lots of sense of community or neighbors known with neighbors, um, sort of in the stage, but
I, I added, uh, that, um, we need more educators of color in our school systems. Our teachers do not, like our students. Not nearly enough. And also, um, thinking about disability issues. Um, so both of my children are autistic and I'm starting to see some employers or parents who also identify as being not nerdy or dark. Um, but there are lots of things to provide mobile access for our students and, and not women as well. And on disability issues, when I think about just the, the physical accessibility, that's something in general, just you might think that they're small, but they're not small, right? The sidewalks aren't clouded well, or even the curb cut isn't shut out. Um, out of all these sorts of things. So I guess maybe that falls into the what kind of works, you know, we can build the infrastructure, but we don't maintain it, right? And make sure it's accessible and complete after things. It really can shut down for, for those that rely on those.
Very good point.
Structures, right?
Anyone else?
Uh, I don't know if someone said this overtly, but there's not enough opportunity to learn English. I mean, it's a huge weight in this, I mean, the learning center, there's not enough, you know, free or evening classes and things like that. More people would need uh, assistance in writing English.
All right. So let's think center in these challenges that we named. Because when challenges come up. So let's talk about the opportunities that we have. Remember what I said. Let's not think like there is a box, we know box. Right? I'm not outside the box, no box. If we have all the resources, what, what are the solutions or opportunities that for addressing those challenges?
I did first remember against the things like.
I seen the passion in the audience, I love it. Someone likes to go first, opportunities. Wait for that. You guys wanna go first? Yeah, thank you.
I'll go first. I'm the language tax authority here for the city. And I am so happy that guys are complaining. Language tax. I cherish when you find spaces where we need work. Those are my opportunities. So put them all in there, because eventually we'll get there. Now, with those opportunities, I'm going to go back to the back of the board. We know the challenge here is that I'm the only one. And this is the first time that the city has had this position over there. So let this be an opportunity to, hey, bring more people to work with me. You know, and we, I can just share the workload, we can move faster. Creating these opportunities. Now, one of the opportunities was that, and something that was just mentioned, lack of English classes. Today, tonight, we are launching an opportunity for the community where we are looking for community members to be trained to run small groups of English conversations. Similar to what we have in the library, we have one in the city right now, which is in the library. And it's overflowed. Tonight, those huge posters over there are calling out for community members to step up and help me. Because I have been working near to this point, there are just two, so those, you know, those last.
Perfect. Happy your actions, don't you leave here.
Yes, yes, so that's one of the opportunities, of this conversation.
Awesome. Thank you. Did y'all discuss any other opportunities yet?
It wasn't said, but this has been on my mind, it's like the elephant in the room. I don't know now on the air, but, you know, some very funny images, you know, two girls were discriminated against when they're here, you know, all at school, I don't think they want, but, you know, Massachusetts passed the Crown Act, so that no one in Massachusetts will ever be discriminated against. They're here again, going to school, so I just think taking an opportunity to take on the trends that are helping towards diverse efforts are a huge advantage. And I'm sure that's helped well in schools tremendously since. So honestly, that's a great thing, the state in general, but doesn't just pertain to all of this, it started in Malden. It's more than know that we can look at this.
How can I capture that? And not to say to raise the law, we did.
To take upon trends and acts that are in progress. Like the Crown Act was going around, it was so small, and sorry, it was so small. And now there's a lot of streets that have signed on, very happy that Massachusetts has signed on. Again, it started in Malden, but now it won't affect Malden child, again.
Taking the role line. All of those. Thank you. Did I talk to anything for y'all?
Yeah. Okay, nothing, great, but thank you.
Yeah, so what we noticed, or like looking at the trends, looking at the weaknesses, there were some where they're not really not dependent to the others. So they said that we need more diverse diversity of teachers in local schools, we need more diversity in leadership in the government, and we have a very diverse population in Malden. So calling on like the diverse population of Malden to become those teachers and those leaders. Someone mentioned about like programs to, you know, if there is a gap in people's readiness to be enrolled, like programs to educate, elevate, give opportunities to people to like give the experience or help to do these things. Pay teachers more. Or get creative programs that is like hire new teachers and support them, or pay or pay them like for all of their degree. And then in order, the other point that was talked about, in order to reach diverse populations is visit mosques, churches, temples, community centers, communicate with those, the leaders at those places to disseminate information and communicate with those in those communities.
Sometimes you don't get the right reach the people, you need to reach the, being more creative and going out and reaching to the places where they go.
So we talked about similar themes and what's listed there, but like a kind of Malden that creates an opportunity for members in the community who talk about, you know, DEI, B, JAB related topics. And I think it falls into the bucket of learning and development. If there's an opportunity where members of the Malden community can go there, try to see a Malden website, but various topics that people can learn about, that it becomes like a library of knowledge and training that's available. If it's through LinkedIn Learning with a partnership with the city, that's one. If not, then that there are people who can develop these content, from intersectionality, the power of inclusive language, religious diversity, and, and.
I have two more things to add. And I'm a, I'm a city councillor, and I take the point really seriously about how hard it is to figure out Robert's roles and like what's happening in city council meetings and planning board meetings and all these really important decisions. And I think we do a lot of inclusive planning processes, but the city might do ten different inclusive planning processes in a year. And so what would it look like if we reimagined all of that together as one unified public political process that was in plain language, we could really get the word out, and we all designed it on, it would be easy for residents to tell us what they think. It would be driving it from a totally different perspective. So that's one imagination I have. And another is that we're starting this master planning process with the city, and Malden has, you know, not tried to accelerate development for some time. But would, would that create an opportunity where we can have development without displacement and gentrification? This has been very difficult for many communities and cities to do, but I think some of the ingredients are here, and Malden is able to do that and empower our businesses. So could we be a model for development without displacement in this next chapter of our city?
Much more efficient than that. Ms. Brooke over here?
So hit a lot of those, but supporting and uplifting our diverse businesses and micro businesses, whether it's, you know, giving grant opportunities to also to groups and to community groups as well. We talked a lot about kind of community cultural competency and trying to figure out how to organically do that kind of stuff. So whether it's cultural exchanges, like community meals, or at the garden with, you know, kind of doing that stuff. We're doing those things, but I think we could do better, and we could do more, there's more opportunities to get those kinds of things. And just having meaningful conversations and bringing diverse people together in a room to have more, I guess cultural competency is, is kind of like understanding each other's cultures and giving the opportunity intentionally to talk about women's cultures.
Thank you. Yeah.
And something just, so I would, at least job training program that operates in Malden. One of the challenges that a lot of our young people face after they've gotten a job, I would say one thing, actually. I think we need more of a location focused inside of Malden to build out opportunity for young people. But then the other thing I would add is that there are a lot of barriers to get into location, like building trades opportunities, which is one of the like strongest ways to make money is out of college education, and that, and that is access to the car. And so a lot of young people in our program faces challenges, like they want to invest in their lives and their families in a career that will sustain their families. But to, to be able to get into that, of course, you have to be able to get a car, you know, get your driver's license. It's not cheap to do that. We have the Safe Communities Act that was passed that allows all, all folks regardless of status to get a driver's license. But the cost is like, it can be like eight hundred to nine hundred dollars just to go through a driver's ed class and then get a car. And then you don't even have a car, like, and you have a real problem, because how are you learning? So, you know, I think there's kind of this, something I've been thinking about a lot, is like, what if we had, the city had some type of a mechanics program, where we learn to go into the issue, like, you're all repaired, and you can repair, restore cars that were damaged, and then sell them back to folks who are trying to make a little bit of industry of that. So I just, I mean, I think there's, that's one large barrier that there's an opportunity that Malden could be part of.
Thank you. We have a few online. There could probably be more initiative for local programs, multiple feedback, the outreach from community members. I think the improvement around resources can improve faculty, particularly residents who first play, which isn't half that, um, English speaking. Secondly, we need to be a noble place for a community, and this needs to include training and programs for all, the school community and Malden community. That's not a safe space for our community, for our community protected from hate speech and act in our community in partnership in the future of all the EIA initiatives. Another opportunity, lifted energy around modernization of downtown, showing that live and work in Malden. Actively work in the standard for recent zone. Do we, oh, I don't say that, but we have any sort of where your own teacher initiative here in Malden, or the United Cities to support building or becoming a teaching work. Someone else? Yes?
Just a, just a couple things. One, you know, with the, with the transit community stuff that's going on right now, we have a fantastic opportunity to go and look at our zoning, make sure that we're going and putting affordable housing and making those real changes for the people. Again, people complain about the cost of housing. We have the ability to go and do things like going and building triple deckers, reimagining how we've got our, our stuff going along the train thing. One of the things that, that for me is like, I love going and looking at the Everly thing that we've got back over here on Shade Street. But it's hidden behind parking door, and I know it gets used, but I would love to go and see stuff like that, kind of expand it out to all of our parks. And again, the parks that are like very busy, you know, let's go and put something like down in the beer, so that, that we can have that there. You know, we're doing the, the parks that are off of Earth on, on Eastern Ave, so that people that, you know, one of the signs of our growing community is going and having people that want to have their families, and they want to go and have their kids playing, and we're doing the work to go and fix our parks. And we can go and do things like going and providing these like very creative places for people to go and have their toddlers and babies and kids going and playing these things. And then, you know, one of my personal things is that where I live, on Eastern Ave, all the businesses there, it's this gigantic wall of gray that goes, that goes literally from Bryant Street almost all the way down to London. And I would love to go and see us going and partner with the businesses along there and say, let us go and put some art in these spaces. We have a fantastic art community, and we go and we do it along the bike trail, but unless you're riding your bike there, you don't necessarily get to see that. And these are, again, communities that are not necessarily exposed to things like that. And it's great that we did the, the switch boxes, but let's go and think bigger. We've got these big canvases, and we can, like, we can go and say, hey, is it something that we can engage people in? Can we get students involved that are, you know, that love to go and do art? We go and figure out how to go and make this, this, like, not gray, but vibrant, diverse. Something that, that Malden really is, so that people aren't, we're not a drive-through town, we're, we're a drive slow through town.
Thank you. Yeah.
So I think we can do a better job to activate our young people, our children and our youth who have always creative ideas, out of the box ideas, they don't see the box oftentimes. So putting them in positions of leadership or influencing, contributing to, to our process of solving problems. And in also, there's tremendous energy among the artists who are performers, musicians, writers, designers and so forth, to use, you know, even the creative process to solve problems, and to approach it from a different angle, using visual, using the media. We just had a film building Malden program, which uses, used media to sort of offer that as a lens to who is Malden. And then I think there's tremendous power in the entrepreneurial community, we talked about that, but thinking entrepreneurially about if we have language deficiency in language, okay, how can we use entrepreneurial process to activate those people who might want to gain a living teaching and start a business, another business, or another nonprofit. So those are the big energy sources.
Anyone else?
Right. But there's also threats. The threat that we all have to think about will be an external threat, right? So we talked about our challenges, our strengths, our opportunities, but there are things that are outside of our control. Whether they're within the city, or they are regional, they're statewide, or they're national. So when we think about our efforts towards this pursuit for inclusive ethical and equity, what, what are those threats we tend to be mindful of as we are thinking about us? And the other guy is fine being here as well. We'll have a short answer time to give your feedback.
Five minutes. Okay, let's hear it.
We're talking about social polarization that's to, to make progress. Um, things like moral issues that are going on that threaten our sense of unity, um, that make it difficult for, for people to see past. Um, you know, the case that are very central to them, um, also backlash to things like DEI or, or supposed critical race theory being taught in schools, like any sort of backlash against, against sort of diversity initiatives in schools, um, and outside of schools, um, as well as extreme weather, like these things, these you know, make everything harder to the sort of that intersection, like climate change. Um, economic problems and how we struggle like it, it out in Walden, outside of Walden, you know, it just seems to be getting harder. Cost of living, um, and train our researches, actively search to address needs of new immigrants, um, and everyone. So yeah, just a lot of limiting, limiting factors like that.
Thank you.
Uh, we have, uh, we brought a lack of funding and access, access to funding. Um, we talked about, um, the lack of a diverse, unbiased local journalism and having more diverse voices that are covering things like this so that people can have more access. And understand that at least it's happening. I think a lot of times things happen in the city. And again, I know people are advertising on Facebook and putting it here and there, but again, we're not reaching. And so I think that that feeds that hate that people are talking about. Um, and we talked a lot about that as well, just the hate rhetoric that's going on, a lot of the people that want us to go back in time and, and that kind of stuff. We also, um, fear of change and, and just could have literally, they feel like they're not given that where they're at because of, of all the changes. And, um, we talked about our immigrant communities and just, you know, like the lack of, you know, they're, they're here to survive, right? And so getting them to participate is asking lots because they don't have the family, like they're working two or three jobs. So how do we, you know, how do we solve that problem? How do we figure out how to reach people like that?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
Um, I did, I think a lot of this was covered already. Uh, you know, at the federal level, uh, like now we see a lot of, uh, capable of the same events. It's, you know, uh, we're, we're seeing things that talk not going to necessarily home. There's an umbrella that's the ball more of one another. And unfortunately that trickle down all the way down to the city level. Uh, uh, someone mentioned environmental impacts and kind of change. Uh, some of the big things is that there's a lot of, you know, misinformation and trusted information that the city might not provide. And even just things like, uh, you know, specifically this and that, when someone here goes and says, hey, I experience. Someone moves into the city and say, hey, you're, you're being unkind or you're being, and they say, no, I'm not. Not being able to go and have that, that level of empathy to someone that has that different level of, uh, of experience. A weaponization of terminology. You know, we go and we hear about, we heard about DEI, we heard about, you know, uh, CRT was the big thing when I first ran. Uh, you know, and having to swing along the board with every literally good chunk of people, like, what critical race theory was and that, you know, were we teaching it in the school? What did it mean? Having people have that, that deeper conversation with people that were going to vote for me. And I'm sure that I lost a few votes because they said, no, but I did get quite a few people that said that, but that came from outside. Walden, that was, that was generated by forces that were in no control because hearing. Uh, and also, uh, you know, finally just, you know, we experienced it here is that, you know, we have IT and that all of our services are locked into that. And, you know, we have, you have a hacking attack and knock us out for the chunk of time. And I tried to, I think it, I think it did a really good job going and getting us back up to speed, but it took a while. And in that time, how many people had called for a service and couldn't get it? And I don't know where it came from originally, but you know, there's a lot of people out there that, that learn this stuff, don't see what they can get. And so, you know, if someone comes in, you can't all of a sudden access the language access for, for an important meeting, or we have someone that's died, uh, that's going through an overdose and we can't get any contact. We have to go and try to go and contact somebody in the fire department or much out there and we can't trigger that. So that's something that we need to go worry about.
Yes. I mean, cyber attacks is like mass weapon, you know, you can do a lot of damage.
And like, I, I can see that we linked the weaponization piece to the, the DEI piece, but they're linking it to the unmasked journalism and the misinformation piece is also pleasing. Cause I think what we're seeing, and we see it on a local level, it's the masquerading of journalism or pushing narratives that are clearly or not true. Or trying to take something like DEI or CRT and saying, well, this is the definition of it. And like, we can't, we can't just choose what fact is anymore.
Right.
Uh, I think the weaponization of misinformation is really a threat in this case on a national level, but a local level too.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, we have one from online, um, that makes it beat that Walden TV. Walden TV can provide programs that are culturally representative or.
Respect.
We had some older people on the previous, they like to think, uh, that not wanting to take power, um, money and budgeting, uh, staying in. Uh, one of us that saw a equal budget, uh, disparity budget where, um, it allows some of the talent. You know, where the budget may go between topics or whatever.
Yep.
Um, and that last week. Just again, when we were thinking about what's happening outside of Walden that impacts us and where we want to be and where we want to go. I always think of Walden's being, because we are on the team, we're super sensitive to not just like the Walden housing market is a bubble, right? So as other parts of the city become expensive, uh, whether it's summer, like Cambridge or Boston, people are looking, I still need to get to work. So I still have to live on the team. Where's a portable map, right? And so I, I always think of Walden's housing market being really high to the cost of living and certainly all around, right? So that gives like the outside factor, right?
Thank you. Yeah.
Um, just going off to like the weaponization or misinformation, just to point out that, um, communities, immigrant communities, communities where English is the first language are more susceptible and more vulnerable to that misinformation and starting with misinformation because they're not used to, they might not be, they're not familiar with this is the communication in the U S, like what news sources to trust, et cetera. Um, and, and if they can't read the mainstream news, they can be more, more vulnerable to WhatsApp messages being sent around, et cetera. So it just makes the outreach that much more important to build trust with people in those communities and make things available in different languages.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, um, by the way, you talked about, you know, money, um, budget cut, uh, cultural backlash of some groups, climate disasters, black environmental racism, um, others mentioning like global issues and also social media as well. That I think even for myself, thinking about this event and how it was, you know, advertised, you know, really was brought out some of the ugliest parts of people in the world. And I think, um, there's so much fueled like hatred.
Yep.
And just not only hatred in this work, but just hatred of people. Um, I think as we continue to think about, you know, doing this work, that's what we're fighting against. And that also poses a threat to just well-being of people that are actually grounded in this part of the nation.
Thanks, Ben. Anything else? Yes.
I think we're doing a lot of, uh, I'll, I'll say that sort of turnover. We're brought from a lot of really interesting, really impactful things, both in the government and also in the community. And as we see, um, people turn over, whether they're elected with it or staff, with this community members and neighbors moving, um, through the bottom of it, that if we don't turn these actions into systems and we don't institutionalize the work, when we are not in this room and other people are in this room, they might be having the same conversation ten years ago. And we want to be building on what we're doing. Again, both inside the government and also outside of the community.
Can I, can I add that to just carry what you said, you know, it's so true about like systems and also like keeping record of what's being done. But I think somebody had mentioned, or I don't know if it was online, about a lot of work has been done, but many people don't know. You know, Jerry Point, people don't know. So it often gets duplicated. So, you know, how do we track that? How do we keep record of that? So people are aware this has been done years ago, this is where we're headed. So we can also see progress to, you know, like even thinking about, and this is just in my head, envisioning with this timeline of like all diversity efforts in Walden, how we've grown, you know, over time, you know, like I think it's, it can be a beautiful thing when you capture that and see that and whether, you know, it evolves into some sort of initiative or project where students, people in the community kind of do some sort of art type of, um, work that captures this is where we started, this is where we are 20, 30 years later, that you have that trajectory of just keep climbing up. And whether you're providing opportunities for learning and engagement, community building, so.
Um, this is more of an internal tendency, um, and it just scares people to talk about it. So I work for a nonprofit, most nonprofits I know are at least talking to one or another people, even at the whole time, even at the pretest, we don't have enough space. I hear that from the city as well, budget, we don't have enough money. Instead of thinking that way, go to the wild imagination, find people who can find those resources. There's always a way. There's a new way to raise money for schools, there've been new ways, you know, um.
Get out of the silos too, right?
Yeah. I was just going to say that even though this is a nice conversation, but then we go back to the respective organizations, we don't have the pathways, connection, sharing ideas, drawing from, let's say, the entrepreneurs, get off with the wild, you know, finding the money. So, you know, you stick within your continent and you won't find the answers there. So I think having a pathway to having constant conversation and feedback group about what's working or how can we move forward and drawing from the diverse expertise to solve these problems are not going to exist.
Yeah.
Thank you. There's one more on it. I have three things.
Um, yeah, kind of, I guess kind of a threat and an opportunity, but I just, I think there's a lot of people that are armed, that speak out in a lot of spaces in Walden from various, you know, instances of racism, discrimination, bias and I, I, I feel like we need some type of mediation process where there's sort of justice process for that means or when the instances occur where, uh, we can do healing with talking to each other and having that act with each other. It just, it feels, I mean, it's happening online, in social media, it's happening in person, at events and meetings with things that are politically or racially charged and we need some type of a healing process.
No race machine. Yep.
Thank you. And I stopped. Who wants to pop up a little bit on the back end?
Um, I, I just was kind of piggybacking off the, the, the rich, the, the not recreating the wheel kind of thing, right? We, what was it 10 years ago or 12 years ago that before Walden Core started, the, the, I can't remember, it was, uh, Susie, do you remember what it was called? The, the community unity? The community unity thing. And, and that to me seemed like it was much more centered specifically on race. And I think that like the idea then was kind of more focused on that. And I feel like we've expanded it to be more like, again, even the diversity, diversity, right?
Intersectionality.
Intersectionality and, and not just that, but like, again, thinking about what it's good to be able to feel othered. And so I usually think that like, that's what we need to be centered in. Like, and again, it's not to say that there's not anti-blackness or anti-Asian hate or LGBTQ, like, you know, homophobia going on, but that we need to always kind of keep focused on right now, this is where we're at and also know that we're building upon the future to what, what lies ahead.
Thank you. Well, there's the last topic.
I was just gonna say fatigue, honestly, it's a busy, especially when, you know, we talk about all these factors, like we want to talk about the well-being of people doing this work, the vulnerability of the, they are consistently being vulnerable, be pushing back on CRT errors, ignores, on why we need to like not get tired when doing this work and remember that we can vulnerable in systems that there's, it's purpose.
I, I, I want to name that race facing the whole even for basically, um, for all the technical question that exists without. The topic's been centered and supporting to keep that intersectionality as part of our lens and knowing this work and how to. So you all have the amazing job, getting a lot of information out. This is just the beginning. It's the first of, of many other conversations. There's going to be honestly a difficult and definitely an understanding of how do we stand from, uh, the great work that y'all have identified today. I'm going to say thank you for your participation, especially for those who have stuck with us online. Um, and I'm going to pass the full back to the show notes.
Yeah. So we would love to have all the, the writings. So please make sure you grab those off. Okay. So first, thank you so much for participating. This went amazing. I'm like super excited about the info that everyone has shared. And I think it'll be really good to take this back and, and really process and see all of the good work that we have to start doing, um, or continuing, I would say. Um, so what have we learned? Um, we definitely got a lot of information about the city, what we need to work on, what's good about what we're doing and what we need to continue. Um, what can we do with this information? We're going to take it and, um, we have the, the racial equity audit team, uh, here that they're going to help us kind of process the information and see, you know, what to do with it and how we can, uh, work on those things. Um, one thing that's super important is that we will be having the next couple of meetings, which will be Wednesday, March 6th from six to eight P M. So that gives us some time to kind of process this information and then come to you with next steps of, you know, our plan and what we're going to be doing to kind of work on all these things. Um, so it'd be wonderful if you could attend that as well. Um, and then there's the feedback form. Um, so we'll leave the screen up. So if you wanted to scan or, um, check out the link there and just give us your feedback on, you know, how you thought this went, um, just generally about the meeting. And then if there are any comments or thoughts that you have to kind of add on to our discussion tonight, or anything that you forgot to mention or whatever, um, please, uh, please click on that and, and add those comments there as well. All right. And so that concludes our.
Sorry. Um, just very quickly, I wanted to, I, is it possible to just ask the members of the racial equity commission to just?
Oh, yes, yes. So sorry. Forgot about, actually, yes, yes. So, um, the racial equity commission, um, the members want to come on up.
Just at least standing. Cassandra Davis and maybe people. And Juan Juan and, um, Councilor Karen McDonald's and we've got Ralph. Ralph Wong, uh huh. I think we got Cassandra, Cassandra Davis and of course, Kishan. Is that, is that all? We do have some youth members also, we're putting numbers who are on hiatus, but thank you to those who are being.